Okay, I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mr. Cummings? Mr. Goswami? Ms. Glass? Mrs. Herrick?
Here.
Mr. Hong?
Here.
Dr. James?
Here.
Hello.
Hello.
Mrs. Reese?
Here.
And President Lacks?
Here. We have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings with the exception of executive sessions, discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purposes. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. As is customary, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session for our executive agenda. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exception to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects and please, excuse me, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares that discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Thank you, Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second, my Mrs. Herrick. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much. We will see everyone in an hour. Okay, welcome back. Good evening, everybody. We're going to start with Dr. Valeski and the superintendent report, please.
Thank you, President Lacks. Good evening, everyone. It's a short report, but a few updates over the summer. The artwork in the boardroom is reflective of the work from all 11 of our school buildings representing students from grades K through 12. Additionally, in the back right-hand corner of the room, you can view artworks created by educators from the East Brunswick Visual Arts Department. The talents of both our students and staff are outstanding. Again, this year, the district has been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This marks the ninth time for this award in East Brunswick. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So congratulations to the entire Financial Services Department on this outstanding achievement. And finally, Sam Mattis, East Brunswick High School alumnus, class of 2012, has qualified for his second Olympic Games. He competed at the Tokyo Games and will now compete in Paris this summer in the Discus Throw. Sam graduated from UPenn with a degree in economics from the Wharton School of Business, and we look forward to his great success in these games. Thank you.
That's great. Good news. I love that. Okay, before I go into the go-to-thecause for the public, a couple of meetings ago, my friend Dom here had expressed concern about the inappropriate use of terminology. And I promised you we would look into it and make an apology because certainly here we never want to offend anyone with our words. Mr. Juliana, I'm going to turn this over to you.
So during a budget, during a presentation on the budget, it is my understanding that I use the word handicapped rather than disabled when referring to certain budget items. I also understand that this has caused offense with some members of the community. And I want to assure the community that I'm sensitive to the terminology, that it was an oversight on my part, and there was no ill intent. And I sincerely apologize to those that were offended.
Thank you, Mr. Juliana. We're always learning. Terminology is always changing, and it's good to keep everybody aware of what words can be offensive to someone because certainly we would never want to make anyone feel bad with our words. We teach at a young age, correct? Miss Deltz, so. It is now the time for the good of the cause for the public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to prevent unfair and orderly expression of such comment, the Board shall provide a period for public comment at every meeting of the Board, and a participant will be limited to three minutes' duration. A lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by the Board's secretary. And I always give a couple of the, I don't want to say ground rules, but just to know that you are, this is your time to talk to the Board. All your comments are to be directed to us. Anything that needs follow-up will be directed to the ladies in the back, and we will make sure that answers are given if they are required. That being said, is there anyone that wishes to speak to the Board this evening? And I just ask everyone, as you come up to the podium, if you could state your name and address for the record unless you are a student, and in that case, you can state the school or grade you're in. Thank you.
I'm Jack Levitt for Springfield Road in East Brunswick. Typically come up here to show you my support for all the hard work you do, but unfortunately, that's not why I'm here tonight. I left the last public board meeting really upset. It was the last one where Dr. Lou Figaro sat up there with all of you, where he sat for close to 10 years, and nobody, not one of you, said a word of farewell or showed appreciation for his service. I found that shameful. You've made abundantly clear that running the district is, in essence, running a business, and none of the seven of you who were up there had any hesitancy making your business decision to support the budget that eliminated Dr. Figaro's job when your name was called. And that is what it is. However, having worked with many executive teams and boards of directors and having sat on boards of directors, it's common practice to recognize employees who have dedicated service to an organization upon retirement, or like in this case, positions eliminated. So where was it? Where's the "let's run this like a business" posture now? You do know how to do it. Recently, we saw the send-off you gave Chris, the former student rep to the Board, and he deserved every word of it. And just last year, when Dani Ruggiero left the role of HR Director, so many of you chimed in, and you even let her sit up at the dais. And again, it was so well-deserved. Dr. Figaro deserved the same. Why the silence? Did he take somebody's parking spot that night? Was it because he decided to challenge some of you for a board seat? Or did you just feel awkward or uncomfortable? And my response to that honestly is that I don't care. You're not there to represent your personal feelings. You have to remember that you were elected to represent the community of East Brunswick, and the community spent close to five hours at this microphone letting you know how much they appreciated Dr. Figaro's service, yet we heard crickets. Or were you advised or even pressured not to speak? If so, did any of you question that advice to completely disrespect a well-regarded employee? Or even question if that advice was truly good and in the best interest of the community? Leaders do what's right, not what's popular, and I've heard many times that you're a consensus-seeking board, but sometimes leaders need to disagree. Again, we heard crickets. Did you know that treating someone differently because of their status or icing them out of the normal tasks of their job can fall under the H in HIB as harassment? And probably a little intimidation and bullying, too. What's not funny about that is that you all sat up there, and when the students and parents talked about feeling harassed and bullied during the yearbook debacle, you were shocked and dismayed and wondered how this could be going on in the district. And the answer's simple. Look to your left and look to your right. You're setting the example for the district that starts at the top. Cultural behaviors are role modeled by all of you sitting up there. You know, I'm not a guy who sits around and throws darts and just complains. I'm a guy who makes things happen, so I'm throwing my hat in the ring as a candidate for one of the seats opening up in November.
Five seconds.
You've shown us that it's time for change, and I wanted to be that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt.
Good evening, everyone. Lou Figaro, 101 Rus Lane. Thank you, Mr. Levitt, for those kind words. I appreciate that. Unnecessary, but thank you. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to serve this wonderful community for the past 13 years. It has been an honor, and it has been a privilege. So I thank you for giving me that opportunity and for the support you showed me over the 13 years I've been here. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the members of Student Services, my colleagues, the principals, the teachers, the staff that work with Student Services. I wish them a phenomenal year. The people in Student Services who take care of our kids every day, who work so closely with all our other professionals, to make sure that our students have what they need, and they do that without a pat on the back most of the time. They do it because that's what they do, and that's who they are. And I know they're going to have a continued success, and I look forward to seeing all the wonderful things they're going to do this coming year. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dominus Colfani, 2 Morgan Place. I first wanted to thank you for conducting your investigation, and thank you for your apology. It really means a lot to not only me, but other people in the disabled community. Next, I wanted to address some things you said last meeting. You say kids in elementary schools get excited to see Dr. Valeski, but come on, they're kids. They get excited when they see a fire truck. Also, you say everyone loves his snow day messages, but we mean that ironically. I mean, someone literally made fun of them my junior year at Mr. EBHS, and the teacher was laughing. Number two, sure, he's at EB Day and goes to elementary schools, but where's he at athletic events? I never saw him go to one senior night in my four years of high school, or even when my siblings played. But I always saw Dr. Figaro. He was the only administrator I've seen actually walk the halls of the school and be personable. Three, all the things you said about Dr. Valeski, about working his butt off and putting work in, where was that sentiment with Dr. Figaro? Where was any of that when he was getting fired? You voted to cut him and didn't even thank him for his many years of service. Where are the speeches commending Dr. Valeski? Where were the board meetings where hundreds of people came out in support of Valeski? I'm sick and tired of this woe-is-me-and-victim mindset. I voted for every one of you on this board. Myself and others voted for you to keep the administrators in check and to prevent something like this from happening. And respectfully, if you cannot do the job you took a note to do, either step down or resign because I can't, we can't vote for someone who wants to defend hate. And it's funny because I saw the new flow chart and everything, and at the top you see electorate, but it doesn't really seem like a lot of stuff is getting reported back to us. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Colfani. Is there anyone else that would like?
Friends. Dr. Jamie Falco, 11 Taft. I'm here to share some news. Our first story, Westfield has hired a supervisor of elementary student support services for grades K through 12, I'm sorry, pre-K through 12. The current supervisor of pre-K through 12 special education is taking on the role of supervisor of secondary student support services. The student support services group includes special education, intervention, referral services, 504 plans, and tutoring, as well as academic support services. Why do your board-approved organizational changes remove the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Activities position? Why are other districts dividing and hiring for that role? Okay, you just missed another round of funds for pre-K education. UPK facilities grant pursuant to the American Rescue Plan of 2021. The deadline was June 4th of this year. Monroe got $10 million in grants last year to expand their program. Your organizational chore is flawed again. Takes into account, it fails to take into account a vital function that reduces the cost of a great education. Maybe instead of having Mr. Juliana as your recording secretary, he can draft applications. In case you forgot, there was a budget deficit this year. You voted unanimously to pass the buck to the taxpayers. We need to increase revenue to offset expected increases in cost. Leads me to my next story. Your meeting is canceled next week with no, or two weeks from now with no rescheduled date. Find that disappointing, there are grants available through the Arts Institute of Middlesex County. They awarded hundreds of thousands of dollars last year for art, music, and culture programs. Shouldn't you be working on a way to pay for the diversity, equity, and inclusion programs we need to fix this culture crisis? Lastly, I'm running for the Board of Ed. Kind of figured it'd be obvious. This is not a badge of honor. It's not a volunteer position. It is an obligation to protect and serve our most valuable asset, our children. We are going to ask questions. We are going to demand accountability. There will be no bias or favoritism. The Board has become complacent. You look like vapid figureheads with an unlimited checkbook for change orders, but not for teacher salaries. I run to bring integrity, inclusion, and innovation to this Board and this district. I will not be hibernating in November.
Mark Scher, 7 Falcon Road. As some of you are aware, I was on trial yesterday. It was a criminal trial as a result of my stopping a bus driver that negligently left my daughter behind at a stop during inclement weather two and a half years ago. It has been a, it has been a horrible, traumatic experience for me because I have pointed out substantial negligence on the part of the drivers numerous times. I spoke at a board meeting on, I believe it was April 21st of 2022, when there was only traffic charges that I pled not guilty to, and in retaliation, you guys upped the charges to disorderly persons. I felt a tremendous amount of relief yesterday during the trial. It went very well for me. The judge hasn't made her decision yet. It was a four-hour trial, but the negligence was on full display. I encourage everyone to get a copy of the transcript and a copy of the video. Ms. Lox, you got about 20 or so emails from me over the past two years explaining some negligence that happened on specific days, where my daughter was standing before the bus took off, where the seat belts weren't fastened. All of those emails were ignored. I asked you to provide me with assurance that the buses would be operated in a safe and responsible manner. You ignored all of my emails. You didn't ignore me, though, when I asked you to set me up with a liaison at the Transportation Department that I could talk to because I couldn't talk to Forsberg because she dropped the, she made the charges. You didn't follow through with that. You made a promise to me. You didn't follow through. That's very weak. You say you're the Board President. You say your interest is in the children's safety. I think you're a fraud. I really do. I'm hurt. My family's been devastated by this. I'm disappointed in this Board. Bernardo Juliana, I think you're a bully. Victor Valeski, I think you're a coward. I sent you a letter asking, challenging you to make this right and to help me mend my relationships with some members of the Board. You ignored my letter. I called your secretary to find out if you got the letter. She said she could get back to me. She never did. Our children are not safe on these buses with this level of supervision. It's not the drivers. The drivers need the right guidance from their supervisors, and they're not getting it. Audrey Maxwell was the driver. She was up on the stand yesterday. She did a horrible job. She was clearly forced to testify. She lied on the witness stand about telling the students to put their seat belts on. You heard the audio. She never told anyone to put their seat belts on. It was really pathetic for you.
Your time is up.
Your time is up.
Your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Scher.
Your time is up.
Anyone else like to speak to the Board this evening? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion. And I am going to ask for a motion unless anyone needs anything separated out. I'm going to ask for a motion on this evening's agenda. Go by Mrs. Becker?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Herrick. Is there any discussion on any aspect? Remember, you can talk about any aspect of the agenda this evening.
So for the community program enrichment fee, so I want to give Emery a lot of credit. He's trying very hard to bring all kinds of good programs to our community, to provide not just our children, even our adults, a lot of opportunity to help them. So I want to give her a lot of credit for that. And second, facility item number one. So I understand that when we have the budget problem, we try to reduce some manpower, but the Emery, the food provider, so they increased two full-time manpower as the result. We increase the contract price. So for the four-year period, so it's a very significant number. So I just want to know why we, they provide more manpower for the service, and then at the same time, we pay so much money for that. So I just don't feel comfortable for that. So I want to know more, what's the rationale? When we cut our own people, at the same time, we pay more the outside contractor for their manpower. So that is my question for the facility item number one. No, I'm done.
That's it?
That's it.
That was part of the budget that was approved by the Board in terms of cost savings?
Well, since we approved that to cut the budget, but this time, when they increase two full-time unit or the numbers, as a result, we increase the contract price for that significant amount. So what's the purpose for us to cut our own employee and then pay other people more? So that's, I didn't get it, so. So if I, so maybe my math is wrong, but for the, because of their increase for three to four years, we got very significant amount of, so it's more than $900,000. That is a very big number.
I don't think that's correct, Mr. Hong.
Maybe my math is wrong, but.
I would have to take a look at the document, but if we had had advance notice of your question, we'd be able to perhaps have the information more readily available.
So I think we should table this one, so, you know, for this one.
All right, would you be able to maybe?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Hong, I'm going to have Mr. Juliana.
Maybe my math is wrong, but I want to know more about this, so.
Okay. Dr. James?
I just wanted to highlight community programs number three, which is the Princeton Review. I actually just wanted to pull that out for my fellow parents. You know, the SAT and the ACT, the test preps are very expensive, and it is an equity issue, and they are still very expensive here. I mean, the Princeton Review's a business, but when I was looking through this, and I see we've got a 66% discount. I mean, I don't know if that's standard for all school districts, but I wanted to make sure we highlighted that because I actually think that's something that's really great because if someone were to get this program from Princeton Review, right, it would have no discount. I mean, I didn't get to take SAT prep, right, because of the price. So I wanted to ask publicly, how do we advertise this? And will we advertise this in a special way so that high school parents in particular, you know, they know that they should purchase this through community programs and not just go to Princeton Review?
So I think they do because this program's been around for a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Very consistent, yeah.
And we always have this discount?
Mm-hmm.
That's one of the things that, for more than a decade, I believe, it's been.
Okay. Thank you.
But thank you for pointing it out, Heather. And I believe that it's also, there's talk about it or information given out at some point during the school, but it's certainly something that's also, I think, on our website.
Yeah.
I think on our website, so yeah, it's been around longer than even a decade, I think.
Well, yeah, no, at least, that's what I was saying, at least. Mrs. Herrick?
I just have one question. Under financial, number eight, the emergency contract repair at Monroe. So we'll be able to, in turn, submit that to our insurance?
We already have.
Okay.
So the way that process would work, because that was a damage caused by a contractor, we submitted a claim immediately to our insurance carrier. We notified the contractor as well. The insurance carrier will deal with recovery of that, but in the meantime, the insurance has covered the damage.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, no other discussion. I'm going to ask the Secretary to please call the roll.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Goswami?
Yes.
Ms. Glass?
Yes.
Mrs. Herrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes, abstent in facility item number one.
Noted. Dr. James? Mrs. Reese? President Lacks?
Yes. Motion carries. Bringing us to information items, committee reports, go-to-thecause for the Board. And I just want to say congratulations to you, to Joe, to Tyra, your finance department, or any of your people here tonight, your finance people?
No, they're not.
No, okay. Well, they're getting a well-deserved rest, but I know we say it nine years in a row. We say it year after year, but congratulations. It's a lot of work. You make it look easy, but thank you.
I will pass that along to the staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, you're ready?
Yes. I just want to extend a thank you to Suzanne Klein and the East Brunswick Public Library. They invited CPAG parents to come over to the library and have a meeting about ways to make library events more inclusive. So we are very thankful for that, and I think they've already started to have some more activities. So I think parents were very happy about that. There's also, East Brunswick Public Schools is having an event at Brunswick Square Mall with MJ Expressions LLC on July 28th. It is also, you know, family-friendly events. CPAG parents will also be there. If you have questions or want to join CPAG, I think we're having our next meeting at the end of August. Reach out to the Special Education Department if you're interested in attending that. And I also just want to let you know that we had a community programs committee meeting back in May, or it feels so long ago now. And I will echo what some people have already said here this evening. Community programs, they knock it out of the ballpark, so I'm very happy to be able to chair that committee because they make it very easy. But just some of the highlights from our committee meeting. So East Brunswick High School students have been visiting ASK programs, providing free givebacks to ASK students. They're teaching them to play chess, having science experiments, doing music. So all of that is really great support for our students. For after-school enrichment, they've been offering mad science, art, basketball, volleyball, cooking, coding. Also, for schools out program, for June 17th, they had a trip to Jenkinson's. I need to hop on some of this stuff. And so they said that the day would be spent at the aquarium and then enjoying the rides for two hours. So really beneficial to be able to offer those while parents are working and the district is closed. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Herrick. This is Dr. James.
I just wanted to discuss an item from an earlier agenda, which is the state stabilization aid. You know, if you go look at the June 6th agenda, you can see that we use that money largely to bring back staff, and it's not, it's not perfect. It's not everything, but you know, I did want to say that I'm very happy with what we were able to do. And you know, whenever any organization has to make cuts, people say, you know, don't cut the lowest on the totem pole, don't balance the budget on the. cut the lowest on the totem pole, don't balance the budget on the backs of working people, and that doesn't always end up happening. But in this case, you know, I think it did, and I really wanted to give a note about our secretaries, right? We were able to move some of our secretaries back from 10-month appointments to 12-month appointments. And I will tell you, I've had the privilege of working with a few of these women, and it would have been a big lift in August to get our schools ready without them. And so, you know, I just wanted to note that I'm proud of that work, and I wanted to encourage everyone also to go out to this event at the East Brunswick Square Mall on Sunday, July 28th. Lori, really appreciate your work with that committee, and I know it'll be a great event.
Thank you. Okay. Well, quick meeting this evening. I hope everyone's enjoying their summer. I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Mrs. Becker.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gwass. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Enjoy your evening.